The Rotary Club of Columbus is a membership organization with a passion for service. Founded in 1915, we're one of Rotary's largest and oldest clubs worldwide. My name is Tyler Townsend, and I have the privilege of serving as the 2019-2020 Club President. We all know the challenges the coronavirus pandemic is posing. Our club has faced tough times, including two world wars, but this is the first time we've had to suspend our in-person meetings. So instead of meeting here at the Trade Center, we're going to meet every week online until it's appropriate to return. So whether you're a member or a guest, thank you for joining us today. We're happy to hear from you.
Welcome to the April 15th meeting of the Rotary Club of Columbus. This week is typically when we host the Best Ranger Competition participants. This week is typically when it's held, and like a lot of things, that event had to be canceled. So I'm happy to say that today we do have a guest that is a former winner of the Best Ranger Competition. I want to thank you for keeping Rotary on your calendar. If you've missed one of our meetings, you can find the replay on either Facebook or YouTube. And for those of you watching Facebook Live right now, be sure to comment, chat with your friends, and ask questions of our speaker, and we'll get to as many of those as we can. And now we'll go to Rotary News correspondent Cameron Bean, who will bring us breaking news from out in the field.
Thank you, President Tyler and fellow Rotarians. It's April 15th, and as you can see, it's a beautiful day here in Columbus, Georgia. Here is a look at your headlines. Faced with the prospect of complete financial ruin due to the COVID-19 outbreak, the United States Postal Service officially unveiled a plan Tuesday to pay off its debts by issuing a new $1 trillion stamp. Quote, "As part of our effort to remain solvent and continue serving the American people, we are proud to introduce this unique die-cut post stamp, printed on a sheet of solid gold and featuring a custom rendition of the Postal Service logo, hand engraved by famous German artist Gerhard Richter," said Postmaster General Meghan Brennan, predicting the quote, "highly collectible stamp, which features a VDS diamond-studded border and a mark made from rare Renaissance-era Tyrian purple dye would be of interest to any entity capable of raising the capital to purchase it. This thing is a philatelist's dream, so get yours while you can. Honestly, we just need to sell one of these things, and we're good. Please help us. This is our last hope," said Postmaster General Meghan Brennan. Having run out of every other possible way to kill time, a local couple began the process of ranking all of the lamps in their apartment, sources confirmed Tuesday. Quote, "Okay, so the living room floor lamp scores major points for overall brightness, but I'm still going with the mid-century modern desk lamp based on sheer aesthetics," a man said, as he and his wife each filled out a handwritten list in which they ranked the eight lamps in their home attributes such as craftsmanship, energy efficiency, beauty, functionality, total lumens, and warmth of glow. At press time, reporting firm the man's old lava lamp from college had been disqualified after it was smashed to pieces during a blowout argument. I'll leave you now with this meme. I'd like to thank past President Tripp Wade for agreeing to pose for that photograph. All right, President Tyler, back to you.
Thank you, Cameron, and I'm glad that you're taking advantage of your social distancing somewhere possibly in the Caribbean. We have, in our club, we have a proud tradition of honoring a soldier as a military guest at our club each week. And this week, Dick Nuremberg will recognize our Soldier of the Week.
President Tyler and fellow Rotarians, this is Dick Nuremberg, and I'm honored again this week to introduce our military guest. This week, because of the COVID-19 restrictions shelter in place that we're all participating in, including Fort Benning, we're doing it virtually. John Tongrit sent us a bio and a photograph of this deserving soldier, Staff Sergeant Zachary Stewart. Sergeant Stewart is from Shawnee, Oklahoma, and in 2004, he joined the Army National Guard. He went through basic training and infantry training, and he joined the 45th Infantry Division of the Oklahoma Army National Guard. They deployed to Afghanistan, and Staff Sergeant Stewart participated in more than 100 combat patrols and earned the Combat Infantryman's Badge. In 2010, he decided to come on active duty, and he was assigned to the 10th Mountain Division at Fort Polk, Louisiana. The 10th also deployed to Afghanistan, so Staff Sergeant Stewart went on his second deployment. At this time, he was a cavalry scout, and so he earned the Combat Action Badge, so he has both combat badges. In 2011, he saw the light and married his wife, Melissa. They have three children. Anthony is 18, Andrew is 14, and he has a four-year-old daughter. I'm sorry, I don't know her name. In 2013, Staff Sergeant Stewart and family went from Fort Polk to Fort Drum, New York, and he stayed there with the 10th Mountain Division until 2015, decided, I guess, that he didn't like the cold weather, so they went to Hawaii, where he joined the 25th Infantry Division. In 2017, he came to Fort Benning and was assigned to the Armor School, where, as I said, he is currently a cavalry scout instructor. Staff Sergeant Stewart, on behalf of all of our members, we want to thank you and your fellow soldiers at Fort Benning for all you do to protect our country every day. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dick. And Staff Sergeant Stewart, I want to also share the gratitude of our club for your service. We look forward to hosting you when we resume our in-person meetings. Now, at this time, we'll continue our series of recognizing our own Rotary Club leaders who are serving in this time of need. So these are CEOs, presidents, and directors of organizations who are adapting to these changing times in order to help our community. And this week, Stephanie Payne will tell us about the Youth Orchestra of Greater Columbus and how they're continuing to serve our community at this time.
Hello, fellow Rotarians. I'm Stephanie Payne, the Executive Director of the Youth Orchestra of Greater Columbus. We need our arts and our artists more than ever. To that end, YOGC's Board of Directors has committed to paying all of our artistic staff in full as if our season had been able to proceed normally. This puts much-needed funds in the pockets of our artists now. We've also released a document of free concerts and musical resources that you can find on our website and Facebook page. We've also created a digital classroom through an amazing piece of software called Smart Music. Our musicians can log in and rehearse their part with a recorded ensemble totally for free. Our music director and I also continue to post instructional videos, as well as videos of our own personal music projects on our social media accounts. Our goal is to help families make today and every day nothing less than musical. Thank you. Stay safe.
Stephanie, thank you and your organization for continuing to serve our community, and thank you for sharing that beautiful music with us. And now, at this time, Haley Tillery will share with us one of our club's most successful fundraisers.
Thanks, President Tyler. Hello, fellow Rotarians. My name is Haley Tillery, and I serve as the Executive Director at the Columbus, Georgia Convention and Trade Center. But one fun thing I get to do as a member of Rotary is work very closely with Jean Kemp on a project we do every year called Rotary Football. So what does that mean? Well, being in the South, we love our football games, so we like to incorporate our Rotary members to cheer on their favorite teams. A Rotary member chooses their team they want to support for the year, and every point that that team scores, they're willing to donate $1 towards the Rotary Foundation. So it's a win for all. You cheer for your favorite team, and you support the Rotary Foundation. This is our largest fundraiser that we have that goes for our foundation each year. And what a great way for us to come together and have a little bit of competitive fun. So stay tuned, because Rotary Football will be picking up sooner than you think.
Haley, thank you for all you do for our club, and for particularly what you and Jean do for Rotary Football and helping us raise money for those important causes. And now, our club's membership chair, Laura Ann Mann, will present a very special recognition.
Thank you, President Tyler and fellow Rotarians. My name is Laura Ann Mann, and I'm the Executive Director of the Muskogee County Library Foundation. I've been serving as the Membership Chair for our Rotary Club for a year now. Today, it is my pleasure to honor Lamar Powers. He is celebrating 50 years of perfect attendance. What a wonderful milestone. I am looking forward to the day that we are able to be together, and we can formally present him with his plaque. Congratulations again, Lamar. We are so glad you are in our club.
It is exciting today to present Lamar Powers with the 50-year-perfect-attendance record. You know, in the history of our Columbus Rotary Club, we've only had four people who have received this amount of perfect attendance back a long time ago. Tom Wade, then Baca Cargill, Jack P. Jr., and now Lamar Powers. We are very proud of that, and we had more than that many years. But this is exciting to recognize Lamar today.
Lamar, congratulations on this achievement, and thank you for 50 years of service above self. Before we introduce our program, I have a couple of brief announcements. This past Monday, we held our first friendly game of online poker, and congratulations to winner Mike Venable and runner-up Josh Henson. And I want to also thank Dick Nuremberg for keeping me out of last place. We have another game scheduled for Monday evening at 8:30. There's no cost to participate, no money changes hands, it's just for fun. If you would like to join us, please contact the office for more information. And our online happy hour mixes have been particularly popular, and our next one will be next week on Thursday evening from 6:00 to 8:00. You'll receive a link in your email, and we invite you to drop by. So now Ralph Puckett will introduce today's program speaker.
Good morning. Welcome to Rotary. It's my pleasure and privilege to introduce our guest today. He is Chaplain Major Jeff Struca, a longtime and greatly admired friend and Ranger buddy of mine, who has been our special Rotary guest on several occasions. At age 18, Jeff enlisted in the United States Army as an instrument and retired as a chaplain with over 22 years of active federal service. He served for 10 years in the 75th Ranger Regiment in positions from private to platoon sergeant. In 1996, while serving in the regiment, Jeff competed in and won the David L. Grange Best Ranger Competition. This contest is three days of military and physical challenges with almost no time for sleep, rest, or eating. He taught ROTC at the University of Louisville and was recognized as the U.S. Army ROTC Non-Commissional Officer of the Year. He spent the final 10 years in the Army serving in airborne and Ranger units. He was a member of Task Force Ranger fighting in Mogadishu and was featured in the book Black Hawk Down and the movie by the same name. Throughout his career, Jeff has attended numerous professional military schools and has received many awards and commendations. These include the U.S. Combat Action Badge, Combat Interment's Badge, the Ranger Tab, the Pathfinder Badge, the Free Fall Master Parachute's Badge, and several foreign parachutist badges. His combat experience includes participation in the invasion of Panama, Operation Desert Storm, Black Hawk Down in Somalia, and more than a dozen combat tours in Afghanistan and Iraq. The next time I go to war, I want Jeff Struca on my side. I know I can depend on him. In 2017, he was inducted into the U.S. Army Ranger Hall of Fame. Jeff holds a PhD from Southeastern Baptist Theological Seminary in Wake Forest, North Carolina. He also has several other earned and honorary degrees. He is an award-winning author with five books in print. He and his wife Dawn have five children and two grandchildren. Please join me in welcoming a great American hero and gentleman.
Hey, Tyler, I want to thank you so much for the chance to be with you today. And I just want to say from that introduction how much it means to me that Colonel Ralph Puckett would make those kind of remarks, because a long, long time ago, when I was a Staff Sergeant in the Army, he didn't really need to do this, but Colonel Puckett kind of took me under his wing and treated me like a member of his family, and has mentored me and invested in me for many years. And there is not an American that I would consider more of a living legend than a guy like Ralph Puckett. So thank you very much, Colonel Puckett, for that introduction. Hey, for you gentlemen and ladies that are tuned in, watching this today from wherever you're at, zooming in from around the Chattahoochee Valley or perhaps around the world, thanks for giving me just a few minutes. I'm going to spend a couple of minutes describing the Best Ranger Competition for you. I assume that there's folks that are watching this that have various degrees of military experience, and so you guys and gals probably have some pretty good understanding of the Best Ranger Competition. But let me tell you why I think this competition is a great asset to the Chattahoochee Valley, why I think it's really important to the U.S. Army. I think it's important to the nation, what happens every year about this time, as you said, Tyler, in Fort Benning, Georgia, when the world's greatest warriors come and compete against one another. So the Best Ranger Competition carries the name of this legendary warrior by the name of David E. Grange. Grange has had a profound influence on the U.S. Military, on the U.S. Special Operations Command, and I've known of him and respected him for many years. And in the late 1970s, early 1980s, David General Grange decided that there should be some kind of contest to see who was the best of the guys that went through the most difficult training the military had to offer. So this was, of course, the Ranger Course, and in 1982, the United States Army started what has become known as the David E. Grange Best Ranger Competition. That means this competition has been going strong for almost 40 years. As you've already said, Tyler, the competition was canceled this year. It's almost unprecedented that the Best Ranger Competition would be canceled. It's only happened two other times in the past. In 1991, because of Operation Desert Storm, where almost a half a million soldiers, sailors, airmen, and marines went to combat. And in 2003, when both Aki Freedom and Operation Enduring Freedom in Afghanistan were in full swing, and most of the warriors in the U.S. Military were deployed, and those are the two times that the Best Ranger Competition has been canceled until the year 2020. For those of you who are just not familiar with this competition, let me show you. I'm going to try to share my screen with you. I'm not really technically savvy, so this may be a total disaster, but I'm going to try to share my screen with you and show you some of the footage from previous Best Ranger Competitions. This comes from Fort Benning TV, and this is a YouTube video that I'd like for you to see while I'm talking. So in this YouTube video, the Fort Benning TV describes what the Best Ranger Competition looks like, describes it for everybody to see. And I don't know if you can see this as well as I can. Now, I should say that what you're seeing is two-person teams, and these are all men who have successfully completed the Ranger Training, which means you don't have to be in the United States Army to compete in the Best Ranger Competition. There have been Air Force, there have been Marines, there have been Navy teams, Navy SEAL teams that have competed in Best Ranger, foreign services who have sent folks to train with the Army's, at the Army's Ranger School. They have also been invited, and there have been foreign countries that have sent air two-person teams to compete in Best Ranger. The course is now open to ladies as well, and as far as I know, there's never been a female competitor in the Best Ranger Competition, but I don't think we're far away from seeing a male and a female or two ladies competing in this competition. The short video is only a couple of minutes long. It only shows you a couple of events in the Best Ranger Competition. And I think I'd like to put this in perspective. What you're seeing right now in this two-minute, three-minute video really equates to about two or three hours of this 60-hour non-stop competition that happens every spring in Fort Benning, Georgia. Now, if you're not familiar with Best Ranger, let me put this on the scale of the toughest endurance competitions in the world. Since Best Ranger started, every year, this competition has placed somewhere around number two, number three, number four in the world's most difficult endurance competitions. In fact, consistently, there's only one or two other competitions that have ever ranked tougher than this in the entire world. Generally speaking, that's the Eco Challenge, a multi-day event that happens around the world, or the RAGA, an ultimate endurance competition with a small team that happens, generally speaking, once a year or so. Meaning, Best Ranger is considered one of the toughest endurance events anywhere in the world. So let me tell you what Best Ranger does for the military, and then I'd like to describe for you that are not that familiar with it, what Best Ranger does for the community. And I'll tell you why I think it was really, really unfortunate. I totally understand, completely support the decision, but I think it was really unfortunate that the Best Ranger Competition was canceled this year. Fort Benning has, without a doubt, some of the greatest leaders in the world that have passed through there in the last 100 years, from Dwight Eisenhower in 1918, going through being trained as a young lieutenant at Camp Benning, to guys like General Stanley McChrystal, or General Scott Miller, or future CEOs, future national leaders. And because of the global reach of Fort Benning, future heads of state that passed through here. Fort Benning threw together this multi-day competition. It typically starts on Friday morning, early in the morning before dark or before sunrise, and generally speaking, it goes until Sunday afternoon. Typically, it's around 60 hours long. As you heard from the introduction from Colonel Puckett, there's no programs in this competition. Generally speaking, a competitor, the two-person team that's in this competition, will get two, three hours of sleep, maybe in 15 or 30-minute increments in that 60-hour period of time. Every year's competition is slightly different, but generally speaking, those two-person teams will move somewhere between 60 and 100 miles in those 60 hours with heavy loads on their back. And that brief video that I was trying to show you, it really only demonstrated two or three hours of this 60-hour event. Best Ranger is mysterious. There's something special about this competition. I really met a guy many years ago by the name of Harry Eichner, who threw together this special combination of the challenge and then inviting the right competitors to do this thing. And as a result, Best Ranger really does draw the world's greatest warriors. And when you put these Type A guys and gals together and ask them to see who really is best, you're going to get a level of effort in the Best Ranger Competition that I don't think can be matched anywhere else in the world, except perhaps the Olympics. In fact, Ranger is often considered in the military to be the Army's Olympics, and guys and gals will sometimes train for six weeks, six months for the Best Ranger Competition. I was first introduced to it at the most unlikely place in 1989, when two guys that I got the chance to know while serving in the Ranger Regiment won the Best Ranger Competition, two sergeants by the name of Fitchelman and Sunshine. And when those two guys won, it captured my attention, and I started working with teams that were preparing for and competing in the Best Ranger Competition, which means for me, this goes back more than 30 years. I had a supervisor that I worked for. He was an incredible athlete. He was an amazing distance runner, and he was also the former winner of the Best Ranger Competition. In 1987, Joe Uliberry won this competition, and he was my boss in the early 1990s. And one morning, we were out for a routine Monday morning run. By routine, I mean somewhere around 15, 16, 19 miles before we got to, before we went to work on Monday morning. And late into that run, Joe Uliberry looked at me and said, "Jeff, I think you should consider competing in the Best Ranger Competition." My reaction was, "Hey, I'm not as big, and I'm not as strong as those guys. I would never be able to be successful in the Best Ranger Competition." And my friend, Joe Uliberry, said, "I thought the exact same thing, Jeff," and somebody encouraged me to try it, and I ended up on the winner's platform. "I think you should try the Best Ranger Competition." So in 1994, I started competing with a partner by the name of Aaron Weaver. Aaron was one of my best friends in the world, our first son. My wife and I named our first son after Aaron. And Aaron Weaver was a phenomenal athlete. He was one of the few people I've ever worked with that I struggled to keep up with. And Aaron and I competed in and completed Best Ranger in fourth place in both years, '94 and '95. Now, I have always said, "I still hang around the Best Ranger Competition. I still make this statement. I stand by it. The people that finish Best Ranger are champions. The guys that try the Best Ranger Competition are amazing in my book." But I think I want your listeners to know, Tyler, that about 50% or more of the two-man teams that will start the Best Ranger Competition, generally speaking, aren't still competing on the second day. By the third day, the people that are still in this competition are just barely hanging on for dear life, because food is strictly controlled, no sleep, there's no rest. It's highly technical as well as very difficult. And in 1996, Aaron Weaver got out of the Army. And in 1996, Aaron Weaver got out of the Army. And I just decided that I wouldn't compete anymore. Like I tried it twice, I finished fourth place both years. I was very proud of what I did, but I also felt like that's about as good as I'm ever going to be able to do. So in 1996, when the, when the training started for Best Ranger, I was still a Sergeant, Staff Sergeant in the Ranger Regiment. And I decided that I just wasn't going to compete. My commander at the time, Colonel Bill Lazinski, the commander of the 75th Ranger Regiment, called me into his office and he asked me as a personal favor to consider competing in the Best Ranger Competition for the 75th Ranger Regiment. It's one of the only times in my life I've ever looked at my commander and said, "I'm not sure if I can do that. I need some time to go home, talk to my wife about it and pray about it." Because I was already weeks behind the other guys that were preparing to compete in Best Ranger. I won't bore you with all of the details, but in 1996, I competed with a guy by the name of Isaac Gamazal. This year's competition was different. It started at Fort Benning. We were flown by helicopters to the mountains of North Georgia. We competed for the first 24 hours up there and then flown back and spent the next day and a half finishing the Best Ranger Competition in Fort Benning. And in 1996, my partner Isaac Gamazal and I won the Best Ranger Competition. Couple of other things that I'll say about this. And then I'd like to save some time because maybe some of the Rotarians that are watching this have some questions. I'd be happy to answer those. But I had a personal policy until 1996 about the media. And my personal policy, though I'd already been to Desert Storm, I'd already been to the invasion of Panama, and I'd already been part of Somalia. My personal policy was that I generally speaking, didn't speak to the media about what I did in the military. First, I was in a Special Operations Unit. I wanted to remain secretive about who I was and what I did. But secondly, I saw a lot of media outlets distort, deliberately distort interviews of warriors that I knew. And what they, what they showed was not fair or nor accurate with what those interviewed, what those guys said. So I had this personal policy until 1996. I had a very, very strong Christian faith. And I had to pray about it before even going back to my commander. I talked to my wife, I prayed about it, and I decided I would compete in 96. I would compete on behalf of the Ranger Regiment, that I wouldn't take any credit for however this thing went. Even if I didn't finish the competition, I would give it my best and then I would just trust the results in God's hand. But I also made a commitment to God that whatever happened, if I had the opportunity as a result of Best Ranger, that I would take interviews and I would try to share my faith and talk about the great warriors that I had a chance to work with in the military. And I really believe it was because of that commitment that God ultimately worked out the circumstances that Isaac Gamazal and I are standing on the first-place platform at the end of the 1996 Best Ranger Competition. I had unprecedented opportunities to do interviews after that. And for some of you that may be interested, I have, as much as I've been able to, tried to turn the conversation to my faith whenever somebody puts a microphone in front of my face, like I'm trying to do right now. After winning the Best Ranger Competition, you kind of become an overnight celebrity in the military. I continue to stay around. I coached the teams for the Ranger Regiment the next year. And I have been involved either personally or in the stands, just cheering on competitors. Every year, if I've been in the country, I've been around the Best Ranger Competition since then. In fact, really briefly, and I'll kind of wrap up with this. In our house, growing up, for my wife and our children, the weekend of Best Rangers kind of become a holiday weekend for us. I will, when our children were younger, take them out of school on Friday and we will just follow the competitors around and watch the Best Ranger Competition. And I do this because I am convinced these are some of the greatest warriors on the planet that come together to try to test their mettle against one another. And I am inspired every year that I watch the Best Ranger Competition. It brings an incredible amount of media attention and a lot of money to the Chattahoochee Valley. And it was really unfortunate that this year's competition was closed because the guys that were planning for the 2020 Best Ranger Competition planned for a lot of it to be conducted in Columbus instead of just on Fort Benning. In fact, the Columbus Civic Center and Rotary Park on the River Walk were going to be key points during the Best Ranger Competition in 2020. And I'm kind of bummed that this year's competition didn't happen. I hope that plan will be carried forward till 2021. It's an honor for me to talk about Best Ranger, not because of my involvement, but because of what Best Ranger does for the Chattahoochee Valley, what Best Ranger does for the Army, and how it really showcases just how amazing the warriors in our military are. And man, if you ever get a chance, because Fort Benning is an open post, get out there and watch part of the Best Ranger Competition. It is worth your time on Friday, Saturday, or Sunday. It's amazing what these guys and perhaps gals in the future will do as they compete with one another. Tyler, I've talked probably more than you guys want to hear, so I'd be happy to throw things back to you. And maybe there's been some questions that have come in on Facebook. I'd be happy to answer a few questions before we wrap this thing up today.
Yeah, Jeff, thank you very much for sharing that. We do have some questions that have come in from different sources. I'll start with one on Facebook. And it was, you just started to touch on the importance of the event to Columbus. How can Columbus help promote the event and support the event?
Sure. The thing that Best Ranger competitors work for is because you're in military, you have to be in the military, in one of the branches of service or a sister country to compete in the Best Ranger Competition. You really can't compete for money. There are some pretty amazing prizes, but those prizes, Best Ranger competitors don't compete for a cash prize or a lot of rewards for this. What they compete for is the honor or the respect of the people that recognize the Best Ranger Competition. So the best thing that people in Columbus can do is show up and support those competitors. Just cheer them on on the sidelines. If you've ever run a marathon, it makes all the difference to hear somebody on the sidewalk next to you just cheering you on. And the Best Ranger Competition is like multiple marathons back-to-back. So it makes a world of difference, especially on Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah, I'm smiling and nodding my head as if I know what that feels like. I haven't run that far, but I have been involved in some races and I can see that. And I look forward to observe it and cheer them on someday. Can you tell us about the training that goes into this? How long is the training? Are the soldiers responsible for their normal activities and responsibilities during that time? What happens if there's a deployment? And what is the training program?
Units, each unit that gets an invitation to send teams to the Best Ranger Competition, they have kind of different policies about training. Generally speaking, all of the competitors train. Some of them will be given six weeks to train, some will be given six months to train. The units that I served in, in the Best Ranger Competition, I was given up to 12 weeks to train while keeping my position in the unit. If I trained any longer than that, then I would have to leave my position, turn my responsibilities over to somebody else. And so for me, the training cycle was very limited. Although on my own time, for almost three years, I spent every spare moment that I had running and road marching and getting myself ready on my own time. But some units will give their team six months to train. Other units will give their team six weeks to train. But yes, almost everybody gets some deliberate time to train for this thing.
And you know, you go into this as elite athletes in top shape. Tell us a little bit about the competition and what it does to your body over those 60 hours.
Great question. Yeah, I, I struggled with showing this video because there isn't a video out there that really can convey what this does to the human body. The guys that compete in the Best Ranger Competition, this is not an exaggeration, are willing to push their body to the limits, are willing literally to compete. And if it costs them their life, to give their life in competition. More than once, I heard other teams that competed with me say, "I may go to the hospital or I may die in this next event, but I will not quit." And what that does to the human body is really, really hard to describe. When you talk about moving 60, 70, 90 miles with heavy loads over a three-day period, there's no way to describe what that does to your back, what that does to your feet, what that does to you physically. And then most of us, a week after Best Ranger, are right back at work doing the same job that we were doing before this competition started. So it's almost impossible to describe what this does to the human body. And it's just because of how far those competitors are willing to push themselves.
Yeah. Well, Jeff, you and your fellow competitors are really a testament to the strength of our military forces. And we so much appreciate everything that y'all do.
If I can just say one quick thing before I wrap up. What the Best Ranger does is it shows the Chattahoochee Valley, shows the world, this is the quality of the American warrior. And it really shows them this is how far those guys and gals are willing to go, how much they're willing to sacrifice for the freedom of our country. That's why I love this competition.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much, Jeff. In recognition for you joining us today, it's our custom to donate a children's book to the Columbus Public Library that will be inscribed in your name and help children for many years. Thank you again for sharing this, this program with us today. Thank you. I want to thank our members for continuing to keep Rotary on your calendar. I want to tell you that next week, we have another great program. The internationally recognized day for Holocaust Remembrance is, this year is Tuesday, April 21st, so next Tuesday. And on Wednesday, I want you to join us as our own member Rabbi Beth Schwartz joins us and brings us a message about this important day. And before we wrap up, I see from our comments that we have a very special guest. Barbara Michonne's husband Brian is joining us today just after his recent successful kidney transplant. So Brian, we're thinking about you and praying for your recovery. And thank you for joining us today. So we look forward to seeing you all next week. And until that time, we're adjourned.